Counsel. Public debate for March. Start with the moment in silence, please. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am the highest case of America. And as the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Chief. Councilman Cove, he has absences. Councilman Vares?
Here.
Councilman Demko?
Here.
Councilman Katina?
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Here.
President of the loss?
Here.
Eric of the state?
Here.
You have a point.
Thank you. We'll first start with any comments from the public regarding any of the motions that are listed on the agenda tonight. Specifically, motions that are on the agenda, if you have any comments, this is a good time to make them. Feel free to come up to the podium and speak.
Whose grand idea was it called to the Chester for a sentence this year? Are we getting rich or what, if we can afford this?
Well, that's not a...
No, it's not true, but they're normal.
I actually have, I have some information on the assessment later on, I'll bring it up, okay, please?
What I want to say is, if you take care of your home, everything goes up. If you don't take care of it, they give you the business. Any way you move, they got you. I thank you very much.
Any comments on the listed motions? If they've been done, we'll get started then. Councilman Katina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the management of the special meeting on February 6, 2012, the comprehensive plan public hearing, and the council meeting held on February 13, 2012.
Second. Comments? Chief?
Roll call. Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the March bill list an addendum, with the exception of the $35,000, 500 payment to the volunteer fire department.
Second. Comments?
Mr. President, the reason that we made this exception to the bill list is that because last week, we asked for a list of invoices from the fire department that we would pay for them, and to this day, I don't believe any invoices have been presented for payment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to appoint Bob Vares to the Borough of Carnegie officials voting delegate for the municipal risk management workers' compensation pool trust.
Second. Comments?
Chief? Councilwoman, or, excuse me, Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to appoint Sue Demko as Borough of Carnegie's alternate voting delegate for the municipal risk management workers' compensation pool trust.
Second. Comments?
Roll call, please. Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a $1,500 donation to the Carnegie American Legion for the 2012 Memorial Day Parade.
Second. Comments?
This is, just to let everybody know, this is in the annual donation that we do make to the American Legion for them organizing and conducting the parade. Some people may not be aware, every band and every participant that comes doesn't come always for free. There's cost involved, there's the cost of food and other things that take place that day.
Thank you. Roll call, vote, Chief.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilman Katina, would you please read the code enforcement motions, please?
Yes. Motion to authorize payment to cornea excavating the amount of $8,900 for demolition of the structure at 996 Chertier Street.
Second. Comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to recommend conditional payment to Olson Contracting the amount of $12,685 for the demolition of 328-330 Plum Street, and return the $12,685 escrow posted in lieu over performance and labor materials, material bonds subject to certification of the Borough Engineer, that all outstanding items have been addressed, and a receipt of a signed release from the property owner at 332 Plum Street, acknowledging satisfactory resolutions to the damages to the siding done to the structure at 332 Plum Street, and holding Carnegie Borough, its officers, employees, and agents harmless for set damage done to the property during the demolition of 328-330 Plum Street by Olson Contracting. $12,680, upon completion of said repairs, the contract amount of $12,685 shall be paid to Olson Contracting, and the remaining balance of the $12,685 escrow shall be returned to Olson Contracting, minus, shall be returned to Olson Contracting, minus all legal and engineering fees.
Second. The public will note that there were some changes to the language of that that occurred just in the caucus before we came out here. Any discussion of this item, comments, anyone?
The change, Mr. President, the changes that we made, we took out the sentence in the event that the Borough would have to contract out to do repairs for the property. We omitted that sentence, and we also added that the escrow minus the legal and engineering fees shall be paid, since there are mounting fees because of some problems with this demolition.
Okay, thank you very much. Chief says this is a financial, let's do a roll call.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Councilman Demko, please.
Motion to concur with Shay Cog, recommendation to award Shay Cog joint O and M CCTV inspections and cleaning, year two contract estate pipe services, in the amount of $448,650.65, total of which Carnegie's portion is not to exceed $75,000 for sewer line CCTV work for 2012.
Second. Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize payment to National Gun Island Emergency Sewer Repair Work on Chestnut Street in the amount of $93,352.
Second. Comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to direct the Borough Engineer to re-advertise the bid for the Carnegie Park Phase One improvements.
Second. Comments? Councilman, can you explain? Why is there a re-advertising?
Mr. President, there's re-advertisings necessary because the bids came in much higher than anticipated, so therefore, we're putting them back on the bid to hopefully get better prices.
Thank you. No further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to award the Carnegie Park Stone Pavilion Cleaning Power Washing Contract to Roach Brothers in the amount of $3,458 upon satisfactory demonstration to Carnegie Public Works.
Second. Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Vares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
President of the loss?
Yes.
Motion to permit Carnegie Flag to utilize the all purpose building Carnegie Park every Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. from March 11, 2012 through April 15, 2012 for their flag football league.
Second. Comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to permit the men's 50 and over softball league to utilize 7th Avenue Field every Monday from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. beginning April 1 through August 31, 2012.
Second. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions in season. Motion A is motion, is motion to adopt resolution number 2012-07, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie designating the north curve of Third Avenue between 4th Street a point 110 feet east of the intersection of Third Avenue and 4th Street as handicap parking only.
Second.
Explanation. Yes, we were approached by, following packing of Saint Louis Dan Seaton. Fortunately, since the opening of the old St. Luke's Saint Louis Dan Seaton church site, his membership has increased, which is great. At, you know, a time in our nation when, you know, parents did religious activities or someone on a downturn, not there. Christians were growing, and he seen a great need and a demand to create a handicap section there. We kept the, and there's Third Street available for residential parking and some people that may be attending the art gallery for events and other things, but we were able to reach a cooperative agreement with him to allow him the extended handicap parking.
Thank you. Any other further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion B is motion, motion to advertise Borough Ordinance Number 2373, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie prohibiting parking on the south curve of Seneca Hill Drive between Mark Reddick Street and Doolittle Street, and on the south curve of Seneca Hill between Doolittle Street at a point 35 feet east of the intersection of Seneca Hill Drive and Doolittle Street.
Second.
Explanation.
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance comes to us at a request of the residents of Seneca Hill Drive. It was tough to see with vehicles parking there. It made it very unsafe in a dangerous intersection, so we felt that it, to encourage safety for all of our residents that would travel that roadway to pass such ordinance.
Any other further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Vares, please.
My first motion to adopt resolution number 2012-05, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie approving that the acquisition of subsequent disposition of numerous parcels of vacant property known as lot and block numbers 102C-244 would be in accord with the comprehensive plan of the Borough of Carnegie.
Second. Comments, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2012-06, a concurrent resolution of the Borough of Carnegie confirming that the Borough of Carnegie has applied for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County in the amount of $517,500 for the purpose of constructing new sidewalks associated with the tri-county revitalization project.
Second. Comments? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 2372, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie authorize the vacation of a portion of Brown Alley pursuant to the provisions of the Act of February 1, 1966, P. period L. period 1656, number 581, as enacted and amended June 28, 1979, P. period L. period number 55, number 23.
Second. Comments? Mr. Solicitor, you want to explain why we're vacating part of Brown Alley?
We received a request from Wright Pontiac, or, excuse me, Wright Suzuki, a big specific Wright triple Y Holdings. They would like to expand their showroom floor, or their outside showroom, and they own all of the parcels of land, butting this portion on all four sides. So in order to do that, pave this into a parking lot, they asked the Borough to vacate the alley. The Borough has just passed that mo, well, is in the process of passing that motion, and they will something like consolidate all the lots and they will have a facility to build a parking lot.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to reappoint Dave Wallace to the Planning Commission with a term to expire by January 1, 2016.
Second. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to amend a motion enacted at the February 13, 2012 council meeting. The correct expiration date of Melvin Cook's term on the Planning Commission is December 31, 2012.
Second. This is just a correct and error in the ledger of the committee members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to accept the proposal as recommended by the Planning Commission of Plus Consulting to occupy and utilize the property located at 505 Washington Avenue, 103-M-30, as an office building contingent on Plus Consulting receiving a variance from the zoning hearing board for the off-street parking being proposed on lot and block number 103-M-40.
Second, explanation. Please.
Yes, this is the old Salvation Army building, which I think is thrift on our part that we were able to get somebody in there as quick as we did. Not as quick as we would have liked, but nevertheless, the building is going to be utilized. It's more employees in the, in the Borough to shop here, to eat here, to do business here, so I think that this is a great win for our time.
What is the, what is the schedule for the zoning hearing board? What is left to do on this?
Steve?
It's okay.
It's okay, no?
It's okay.
So that's, it says contingent on receiving approval, and it's been approved. So at this point, once we approve this motion, it's done. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the consolidation of lots 104-F-75 and 104-F-76 for Carnegie Office Park as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. Comments? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to ratify the decision of the Planning Commission to reschedule their meetings to the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Second. Comments, discussion? Steve, would you care to comment as to why the move?
The reason why we're changing it from the third Wednesday to the fourth Wednesday is to simply give both parties, those who are submitting, as well as the Planning Commission members, more time to review the plans and just to gather more information.
Thank you.
Steve, did you say third Wednesday or fourth Wednesday?
Oh, excuse me, it'll be the third Tuesday to the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Thank you.
Terry, has a comment here.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was the last Tuesday of the month.
That'd be different than the fourth Tuesday, then?
I don't know. If the month, say, I mean, March, it starts on a Tuesday, it could possibly have another Tuesday, fifth Tuesday.
Okay.
That's why I thought it was supposed to be the last Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Is there a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Need a second.
Second, I want a motion to amend.
Is, is everybody okay with changing the wording to the last Tuesday of the month? Comments of anyone? All right, I need approval for the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion is amended to the last Tuesday of the month. And back to the original motion to ratify the decision of Planning Commission to reschedule the meetings to the last Tuesday of the month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to permit the First Christian Church of Carnegie to utilize Carnegie Park on April 8, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. for sunrise services.
Second. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to permit the Golden Ager's to utilize the council chambers on the first Wednesday of every month from March through November between the hours of noon and 3:30 p.m. at no charge.
Second. Comments?
I just think that this is great that we could, you know, reach out and assist our senior citizens. The Golden Ager's is a wonderful organization. My mother belonged to it for years, too, I believe your mother also. It's a great organization, and I'm just glad that our brother is able to help them.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, Administration, Finance, Councilman Katina?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items tonight. The first item, well, we finished two months through the year, two months through the year, on our revenue, we are 25.9% of budget. We should be at around 24%, so we're running slightly higher. We brought in $1.4 million. Our expenses are running 12.2% of budget on a goal of 24%, and our expenses were about $680,000 here today. The only other item I'd like to discuss tonight under Administration and Finance is obviously these assessments, Mr. President. Obviously, with the assessment debacle that we're currently in, and that's exactly what it is, like the debacle, I've had numerous complaints from citizens. There's various inequities, there's various rates, there's various differences in the property values, obviously, that have been used and have been thrown out there. And quite frankly, it's disturbing. It's disturbing that this was thrust upon us, and now we're subject to basically trying to muddle through it at this point. Just to give you some ideas of some numbers. Carnegie, our 2012 assessment, now this is the number of our gross property, how much our taxable property we had in 2012. It was $293,525,836. With this reassessment that went through, the 2013 property values for all of Carnegie an increase of $100 million dollars in assessed property in Carnegie. That's a 34.2% increase. That's just astounding, honestly. I'm just astounded by that fact. From what I'm hearing from the residents, obviously, I know some of you have filed informal appeals. I went through my informal appeal process, and quite frankly, the informal appeal, not only in my personal opinion, but from the residents I'm hearing, it was a waste of time. Nothing got, nothing got changed. They looked at people like they had a third, like they had another set of eyes. And quite frankly, I'm embarrassed and ashamed that that's what it was, and that was the informal appeal process, and why they wasted people's time trying to, trying to spend the time to go argue these when they weren't going to change anyway. The formal appeal process, I can tell you that if you don't agree with your assessment, and I, if you agree with it, so be it, God bless you, but for most people, you probably won't agree with your assessments, and you're in the same boat like me, I don't obviously agree with my assessment. So you're going to be filing a formal assessment appeal. What you should bring, and actually, I have documentation here tonight. I have the actual 2010, or 2013 assessment appeal form, some tips from the county, tax abatements exemption forms for the county, senior citizen relief program from the county, and the formal appeal fact sheet and frequently asked question sheet. If anyone wants any of those, you can all have them. But what they're looking at for the formal appeals is, from what the, from what the appeal officer told me when I had mine, what they're basically looking for is sales. Sales of comparable homes. You definitely need to bring that to your, to your formal appeal because that will make or break the difference. I've gone through this whole process, I went through it back, I appealed my property assessment in prior years, and I actually had to go through the formal appeal process where I lost, and then I had to go through Common Pleas Court, I had to file an appeal, and I went in Common Pleas Court. So don't be surprised if you go through the informal, or you go through the formal appeal process, and they don't necessarily agree with you at that point in time. Once you go to Common Pleas Court, you will physically meet with someone from the school district and the Borough Solicitor, and they will hammer out, and you, obviously, and the hearing appeal officer, and you will hammer out what you think is fair, providing you have the evidence with you showing what the comparables are, showing what home sales did. You should bring all of that to the formal appeal, and go to Common Pleas Court if you don't agree with it. There is a cost for going to Common Pleas Court, but when you're talking, your assessment going up 20, 30, 50, $100,000, or even more, it's well worth it, and it's money well spent. So, again, good luck, good luck to everybody going through this debacle. If you have any questions, I'd be more than, since I've gone through this, I'd be more than happy to help you with it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I think, I think we need to add that people should not be expecting that their property tax is going to go up 34%.
No, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be expecting that. What's going to happen is there's, there's a 5% windfall cap. So basically, what that means is that we can't take any more in over that 5%. And actually, what we'll probably be looking at next year is decreasing our millage to be in line with what these current values say at that point in time. Of course, we're going to have to try and look into a crystal ball at that point because I don't think they're going to be through all the assessment appeals at that point in time. So we're going to be shooting a moving target when we're talking about the budget next year.
But what is conceivable is that if you have your property, and you had an increase in your assessment of, say, 20%, when we lower the millage rate to make sure we don't go over the cap, you could find that your property tax went down. That your, that your actual assessment went up, that your property tax goes down. So you need to keep that in mind as you're going through, through this process, that granted, if your property assessment doubled... if your property assessment doubled, that's a very serious matter. And for a lot of the businesses in Carnegie, that's exactly what has happened. But if you had a small increase in your property assessment, you're probably going to be okay. So just keep that in mind. We're only allowed to take in an additional five percent. Even if they assess that everything went up thirty-four percent, we cannot raise your taxes that much. We're not allowed to do that. So that's important to keep in mind.
I'd like to make one comment, yes. Being a real attorney, I've had so many people call me and ask me if I could do columns for them to take in, and your best bet, in my opinion, when you go to fight these, if your taxes went up a considerable amount, and you can afford to have an appraisal done, that's your best bet, because if you take an appraisal, and they cannot argue with that appraisal, because that's what your property is appraised for. Or if you just bought it within the last year. I mean, I have clients that just bought their house in the last year and got their new assessment installed. They just bought it. So you can't argue with what somebody paid for it a few months ago and the appraisal at the property at that time. So they really don't have a good argument for that. So if you can afford it, my suggestion is to get it appraised.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor.
Mr. President. Pat, isn't it true that most of that increase was for commercial property?
Sixty-nine percent of it.
Yeah, it was for the commercial property.
And I have a little bit. Because I, if it comes to the Carnegie Borough Tax Assessment Appeals, I'm going to be actually the person defending what you say, so can't get into the specifics of the Carnegie once, but on the other side, in other municipalities, I actually do the property owner ones. And some of the things we've been seeing, number one, what Ms. Deppco said, if you have an appraisal, that is probably the best evidence you can take in. They can't dispute it, but to dispute it, they'd have to have an appraisal of their own that says something different. One of the things about the comparable sales that I've noticed, and I've...
What, Mr.?
About, excuse me, about the product sales, the taxes actually going down. Today, I saw one in the city that actually had a hundred thousand dollar assessment increase, but the taxes are actually going down two thousand dollars next year. So it has to do with what Mr. Katina was explaining, the anti-wind default provisions under state law, and the amount that the school district can increase their taxes. In this case, this was a city property, but the person went from three hundred fifty thousand dollars to four hundred fifty thousand dollars, but the taxes are actually going down two thousand dollars. But if you do still want to fight, and eventually, I would surmise that the millages are going to catch up to where they are, even though they're going to have to decrease the millages next year, probably the year after. The comparables I've noticed on the county website are absurd. They had to use comparable year sales, and in some cases, like for instance, I know one that was in East Liberty, a rowhouse in East Liberty, where they compared it to a, what I call a mansion in Shadyside, where they got these comparables at. But there are things to attack in there. If you look at them in square footage of lots, what they're comparing it to, I have one that I'm working on there. The guy's lot was assessed at ninety thousand dollars, it was twelve thousand square foot. The comparables were all thirty-three thousand square foot and three thousand dollars more, so if you argue by square footage, the guy that I'm representing, there should be about a fifty thousand dollar difference in this assessment right there of the lot property. But there's things that could be done, and if you have any questions, you might want to go to an attorney. A lot of these are contingent fees based on what they actually save you in taxes next year, so that would probably be a suggestion I'd have, too.
Thank you.
And I'd just like one brief comment, too. You know, I want to thank Vice President Katina for all your work. That was great, providing our citizens. My hope is, too, you know, is I have deep concerns with these property assessments, that, you know, we lose businesses, we lose residents moving to outlying counties, you know, they're making more sensible, affordable. So I still stand out, hope that there becomes a state mortuary where we're not the only county that they say, you got to do yours every ten years, but yet surrounding counties haven't done any for years. So, you know, I still hold out hope. We passed a resolution last month, and County Executive Fitzgerald is personally going to deliver them to Here'sburg, and hopes that the governor, and he can get the ears of the legislature to follow the guideline, create a state mortuary where every county in the state, not just Allegheny County, has to hear this.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else, Mr. Katina?
No, that's it, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your commentary.
Thank you, thank you. I would just reiterate that there are resources downstairs for citizens if they need assistance in filling out the forms. The mayor has also provided some written material which gives some guidance in addition to what we got from the county, so those are available to everyone. Code enforcement. Chief, do you know if we have any code enforcement activity? No curbs issued, so I don't know. Terry?
Code enforcement.
Thank you. Committee reports, Katrina, Public Works, Councilman Deppco?
I just would like to report that the emergency sewage repairs on Rossland Road are finished. We haven't received a bill yet, I don't think. Chestnut Street, emergency repairs are also finished. We did get that bill, which I was really upset about because it was a lot more than we anticipated. So I hope that doesn't happen in the future. But in Rossland, I don't think we've gotten a bill.
Eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
So that's wrong what they said, and that's all.
Thank you.
And I will have next month a report on all the spring projects at the public works.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to update everybody. Councilman Verres, Councilman Coby, and myself, and Sergeant Kennedy met to discuss this year's Public Safety Day. It will be held on June sixteenth. The time will be on our website, we'll give out to Steve, you know, on our website, and I will announce it again next month. I just wanted to make our residents aware, if they're not already aware, of the state legislature recently passed, they know I'm texting while driving law. I know some people might say it's foolish, it's, you know, but we're talking about the safety, and when we talk about small towns like Carnegie, not just other drivers, but our residents. We have a lot of elderly people in our neighborhoods, they don't exactly get across the street as quick as they even like. So you need to be very aware of your surroundings, young children, not chasing the ball. So please, adhere to the law, don't text and drive. If you need to text, pull over, takes a couple seconds, and then get back on your way. Lastly, Mr. President, I just wanted to report that I've attended the last two Memorial Day parade meetings, and the planning is moving along. And lastly, if anyone has an American flag that is rather tethered or torn, and you want to dispose of it, it's very important that we dispose of those flags appropriately. If you go down to Legion directly inside the door, they have a box, and the weekend before the Memorial Day Parade, they probably burn them and make sure that it's taken care of. And if you're unfamiliar with where the Legion's at, if you bring the flags here to the Borough Building, I'll check with our staff, and when we get a few, I'll make sure that they get taken down there. But we want to have respect for a flag, even, you know, when it's not flagged, but when it's discarded also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community Development, Councilman Verres?
No report this evening.
Thank you.
For my time this evening, I just wanted to mention that since our library executive director is here, it's appropriate to mention that she has turned in her resignation. She says she's going to retire. And this is very disappointing to me, and I think to the whole of council, that we just lost an executive director a few months back when Maggie Forbes resigned, and that has followed in the heels with another resignation, and it's... We feel that it's a dangerous situation for the library to lose two senior, experienced staff members so close together. We are concerned. Council is concerned. The library musical hall facility is an integral part of our community. It is a vital interest to us. It is not something that is merely an appendage, which if it failed, would not be so serious. We consider it to be a significant part of the future of the revitalization of Carnegie. And I'm taking the opportunity now, as I will in the next coming days, and speaking with the library board president to express our concern that the board is maybe not doing what it needs to do to retain its key personnel. We consider it a threat to the Borough, and I'm going to express it that way. So I won't put any pressure on our library director, but I will certainly be expressing to the president of the library board that they need to do whatever's necessary to keep her for some longer period of time, whatever that might be. I don't think it's a time when we should be having Diane retiring. I'm sorry, you're not allowed to go. So this evening, council and the mayor signed a letter to the library board expressing our serious concern with what's going on at the library at the moment, and our request that they do everything possible to find out what the problem is and to solve it, so that our library can continue on its path, which has been a very positive one for the past ten years. So we would like that to continue. Chief Candrex is not here, so we'll go to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of February, we're in March, right? For the month of February, criminal arrests and citations were fifteen, traffic citations were fifty-seven, traffic tickets were a hundred and one, and complaints in self-initiated activity were eight hundred and ninety-four. It's amazing that we're in March already, isn't it? I can't believe it's March, middle of March. Incidents at Carnegie Towers, we're actually back to the normal range this month, so we continue to monitor that. There was a little bit of a spike last month, but at this point, we're right back in the normal range where we've been over the course of the last two years. So we will continue that as month by month, continue to monitor. As you know, we talked about this many times, carts at Bottom Dollar. We sent a letter to the residents at Carnegie Towers, asking them to please keep the carts from Bottom Dollar at Bottom Dollar. We've been having a lot of residential complaints from people living around those areas about carts being taken off the property and taken through the streets of Carnegie. And actually, there's many of them still up at Carnegie Towers, probably about a half dozen to two dozen up there in the back, so we are monitoring that, and we'd like to try to get that under control if we can. I've had also a number of complaints about feral cats and other animals, but especially feral cats in neighborhoods. If I could put Public Works on the spot right now, what's the process when you have feral cats in your neighborhood?
Set up traps.
Okay, just set up traps, we contact the Borough?
Call, call, uh...
Right, and we try to do this as humanely as possible, but one of the areas where we're having a big issue, I think, is down on Second Avenue. I got a lot of complaints down there. So hopefully, we can rid our Borough of some of these feral cats problems. I don't know if there's many others, but I've had about two or three areas that have them. I got enough...
They're living in vacant buildings?
Yeah. On the one on Second Avenue, they may be living in a vacant building on Second Avenue, from what I understand. So that's a ruination.
Keith, I think you dealt with that one on Second Avenue before. That was probably Debbie's.
We dealt with it, right?
And they come back, they go back, correct.
I'd like to give an update on the Campbell's Run Creek project. It's been almost two years, not quite, but it's been a long, arduous process. But I spoke with the project manager from the Army Corps of Engineers this morning, and here's where we are at this point. The bids are in, the money is safe, awarding of the construction contract will be done by either the end of this week or early next week. After that, it'll take them two weeks to get the necessary bonds for the project, and the start date should be immediately after they secure those bonds, and they have one hundred and eighty days to complete the project. So as I said, this was a long process, it should have been a lot quicker than this, but at least we have a date now that they will be starting. I will say that, Mr. President, I asked you if you could ask Public Works to check the creek above the bridge, especially during this rainy season, and make sure that there's no debris in the creek, so that this flows freely throughout the rainy season.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Deppco?
Sorry, Ms. Deppco.
FEMA has dedicated this week as National Flood Safety Awareness Week. As you know, if you, there was an article on Saturday in which our chief was featured with some questions, and if you need to know about how to prepare for floods, you can go to FEMA's website that they have set up for this, it's www.reddy.gov/floodawareness. Okay? And they have some safety tips there and some preparation tips. Also, thank you, Vice President Katina, for your assessment thing. I have a few more things on the assessments, too. As President Dela said, I put out a tip sheet for the assessments. I've actually given out over three hundred of those tip sheets that I've actually sent through the email, and I've had to replenish a stack of forty at the library already once, and I've had to replenish a stack at the senior center once. So there's obviously a big need for this out here. One story I would like to share with everybody, and this is where the system is really flawed, is I was working with this individual who lives up on Dean Street. His assessment, he's a senior citizen, he's seventy-four years old, his wife's sixty-nine, both of them are ill, and his assessment was fifty percent. He is not connected to the internet, so he doesn't even know where to begin this process on how to appeal this. Unfortunately, most of the information that, if you're going to do this on your own, is on the internet. And this is where the big disconnect is. There is no help for our seniors out there who are not connected to the internet, who are living on a fixed income, and they're really getting the shaft on this. I'm a little disappointed that the county hasn't stepped up with some more help for these individuals. I mean, for individuals like Vice President Katina, myself, or anyone else who wants to appeal that is connected to the internet, we can at least get the information. But there's a huge, I don't want to say wall, for these senior citizens to get the information and to actually be able to have an appeal. Now, the last thing he said to me the last time we were talking, because we were at the library, we were downloading some information for him, the last thing he said to me was, "If I die, how is my wife going to even afford to live here?" And that's just a sad testament to our society as a whole, that this process is so cumbersome that people who have lived in their house all their life may not be able to waddle through it. Some other notes I will mention. That drop-in date for the formal appeal is April second. If you have your formal appeal, if you have had an informal review, and you may not have gotten your results checked, still file for the formal appeal. As Mr. Katina said, a lot of people aren't getting the results they want. The other thing I will say is that they've added some other sites. Kane Hospital now is a site for our area, so you can request Kane. And the very last thing, there was a whole new set that went out last week, it was the West and the North. And when they went out last week, the lines are flooded, you can't even get through to the helpline at the county. So I've heard nothing but complaints from Thursday, Friday, and today, that people can't get through on the helpline. So if you're not connected to the internet, you can't get through to the helpline, how on earth are you going to appeal this? We've had, I've had one meeting at the senior center with the senior, actually, I've had We've had, I've had one meeting at the senior center with the senior, actually I've had one meeting and one minor meeting with the seniors at the senior center to get some information out. We also have something set up for, haven't had the date confirmed yet, but we're going to have an attorney come down to the senior center, but it'll be open to anybody, to answer questions regarding the process on how, on how to get muddled through this. So that attorney, I should have the date in the next day or two, it was given to me by Caldwell Banker, so it's an attorney that specializes in this. The Carnegie Elks, remember that name? They're alive and well, they're still, they're still giving out money to our community. The other night, Thursday night, Carnegie Elks BPOE number 831 had a dinner in which it was their National Foundation Gratitude Grant Dinner. And during that dinner, they gave away $2,000, $500 each to the Carnegie Library, to the Historical Society, to our Carnegie Fire Department, and to the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club. So we thank them very much, and they wanted me to let everyone know that they are accepting new members. And I have placed membership forms over there for the Carnegie Elks along with tip sheets and appeal sheets, and appeal forms for the assessment over at the table.
Mayor, where are the Elks located at?
They, I guess they meet at the Polish White Falcons.
Polish White Eagles.
Polish White Eagles. I'm sorry.
There's a difference.
There is a difference. When I used to play flag football, we used to play the Polish Falcons, so there's a big Comedy night for the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club is set, and they're going to have a packed house. They really don't have many tickets left, but if you come to the door, they will try to find a seat for you. There's a new restaurant that opened in our community, Cafe Deli. If you haven't been here, it's pretty neat, they have some very good wraps. It's Indian food, it's at 205 Mary Street, as you remember, it's the old Holy Souls Church. And they have a really nice outdoor seating area and a courtyard. They have a courtyard with outdoor seating area. So come, come spring and summer, that's going to be a nice place to be. I'd like to remind everybody, this is something we have every year in our community, and it's unfortunate that people in our community don't take advantage of it, because people come from all over the county to take advantage of this. St. Peter's and Paul Ukrainian Egg Workshop. The date is March 25th. And if you've ever seen the beautiful pesky eggs that they make, in this workshop for $20, they will teach you how to make a pesky egg. And if you're interested, you can call Michael at 412-527-5359. And if you don't want to make the eggs, a week later, they have their, they have their pesky eggs out. And that starts at 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on April 1st, 2012. And of course, you can enjoy Ukrainian ethnic food here, and it's delicious. The intricate design on these one-of-a-kind eggs are just, it's priceless. It's worth just going to see all the, all the neat artwork that they have, so. I want to congratulate the Carnegie Fire Department on a successful fundraiser on Saturday night. The Night Races, it was a nice job, congratulations. School news, pretty important school news here. The Carleton School District is having focus groups for picking the new superintendent, and those focus groups are this Wednesday. So if you're watching this on tape, it's going to be too late. But if you're here in the audience, you can go Wednesday, and the focus groups go from 12:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the school, and from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening. And you can get more information on the website. But you don't have to have a student in the school to be concerned about a new superintendent. So if you want to just go and talk about, you know, your taxes and keeping the budget streamlined, feel free. This is from Ms. Covey, who unfortunately is the old tonight who couldn't be here. The annual Easter egg hunt is April 7th, that's a Saturday. It'll be at the Carnegie Fire Department, it's at 12 noon, and it's for ages 3 to 12. So the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April 7th, 12 noon. Last thing, and I just want to thank, and I've worked very closely with Diane on a number of projects, and even today, we're still working on things. And I really appreciate your dedication to the library. I appreciate your expertise in Civil War history, which made our, our library a national treasure. And I definitely, I appreciate your willingness to partner with all the other groups in the community, from the Boys and Girls Club to the schools. And, you know, I told you many times, I hope you don't leave, I'm sad to see you go, but we were definitely blessed to have you here for the time we did. So thank you very much, Diane. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. At this time, we'll make comments from anyone who has anything to say. Please step up, state your name and where you live, and feel free to speak.
Diane Kleinfielder, Executive Director of the Andrew Carnegie Library. Excuse me, two things. The April 28th Annual Civil War Living History Day plans have been completed, and I want to thank the borough and council for your cooperation in helping to what we're sure will be another successful event. Last year, we had well over 1,000 people come into Carnegie for that, so that is all planned. Secondly, I've gotten to know many of you personally, and it has been my pleasure to work with you. And for the people of Carnegie, I just want to say it was an honor working for them. I truly, truly came to love Carnegie in the six years that I've worked here. So thank you very much.
Comments from anyone else?
I don't know if there's anything mentioned or law aware. My name's Henderson, born and raised in Carnegie, a long time ago before somebody worked. And you're going to let the Carnegie Blues Sasse Hardees Festival go down the tubes? I think that's a sin. It brought a lot of business into Carnegie, a couple undesirables, but it brought business into Carnegie from out of Carnegie and out of here. That's the thing that I think you need to do. That's all I can say.
I will say, I have to agree with you, I think letting it go is a huge mistake. I'm hoping that it can be, if we, I still think there's time to save it this year, but if we can't save it this year, I'm hoping that people come together and we can save it next year. I appreciate Phil Boy's effort in the last couple of weeks for trying to save it. I think we kind of put it on the spot last week. I personally would have liked to have gotten this out there a little more to, so that people could at least make a choice for this year.
I mean, all I would say, I mean, if it could be saved this year, save it.
This body would be open if we can get people to save it?
I mean, are you going to run it? I mean, we need somebody to run it, that's, that's the worst.
First, and I appreciate you making that comment, I think that's what we should have done. I mean, we should have put it out there that we need people to run this when we knew that we didn't have people to run this, but that wasn't done.
Well, I, I have to speak for council in saying that, you know, we're going to take some heat because it will be said that we took our eye off the ball on this, it wasn't up to the top of our priority list, maybe to attend to. Maybe that's true. But you know, we have borough engineers that are telling us we have a couple million dollars worth of sewer repairs to make, and that's a big deal for us to pay attention to. We have the fire department that says they would like to buy a million and a half dollars worth of fire equipment. That's a big deal, I mean, you guys have to pay for all of that. Those are the things that we've been paying attention to. And if we miss the festival, you know, maybe in September, we should have been talking about that. Well, you know, it wasn't at the top of our list of things to do. And sometimes these things happen. We had key people resign, and then there you have it. I've had a lot of people, of course, say to me that they don't want the festival to go away. So if we miss it for this year and people miss it enough, then guess what? Maybe next year it'll be back again. If nobody steps up to the plate next year, maybe people don't miss it that much. So it's nice to say that, you know, it was a nice party, we all enjoyed it, we're going to miss it. We'll see how much we miss it. We'll see if people are prepared to give up their summer preparing the festival. Because I've heard a lot of people say to me, "Oh, I volunteered." Well, they're talking about they volunteered to give a few hours on that weekend. That's not the problem, folks. The problem is that you have to start planning it in January, and that takes a lot of time. And if you ask people, "Are you willing to give up your summer for free to do this?", then maybe their answer isn't the same. It takes a lot of work. A festival of that size in any other area is conducted by paid professional staff, not by volunteers. So that's a problem that we had, it's a problem that we have to solve. Maybe we can solve it through comments and discussions this summer and meetings, maybe we can solve that, and for 2013, maybe the festival could come back. But you can't keep running it like we were running it and just expect it to go on forever. It's, it's, it's a problem. It's a problem to ask somebody to give up all of their time to do that. Maybe we can solve it, if we can, we will. If there's a solution and people want it, then there'll be a solution and we'll have it back again. So, I mean, that's really the situation that we're in. It's, it's something that needs to be done well in advance, and it takes a lot of time, and volunteering for a couple hours isn't the answer. The people that run the committees and run the festival, by the beginning of summer, they're spending half of their, their workday prepping the festival. And that's an incredible amount of work, incredible amount. And normally, as I say, people get paid to do that sort of thing. We ask people to do it for free. So if the, if the folks in the borough want it bad enough, it'll come back again, and the people will step up to do it, and it will happen. And if not, then we won't. Other comments from folks?
Couple of, couple of questions. Just looking for, I'm afraid on the House on, I don't know who to look at when I asked this, when the House on Center Avenue that made the cut, made the, made pets legal. Did somebody bid and are going to tear it down?
Is it for a seven Saturday?
For a seven Saturday.
I don't think we put out for a bid yet. But it's, it's pretty good.
It's got, we have the consent decree and everything. It's a matter of when you're in.
We have the label, or we have the court order to tear it down, hopefully it's been put out for a bid yet.
That's where we were last month, I was looking to see if we made any progress.
Waiting for Joe Seitz to put the bid together, borough engineers to put the bid package together. That would be the next step.
Anything told to do that, or asked to do that, or whatever the proper?
Yeah, we'll follow up with that. That's the next, that's the next point, the borough engineer has to put the bid package together. That would be advertised, and we'll take bids on it. And once the bids come in, assuming that one of the satisfactory little bid will be accepted, and then we'll accept demolition. But that's where, that's where it is right now, is the borough engineer has to put a specification together to put it out for bid.
I see the Chief Candrex declined your invitation. Is it safe to assume that no progress has been made between the borough and the fire department?
There have been, there have been discussions, informal discussions during the past month, but we have not come to agreement on a new ordinance to recognize the fire department yet.
I hope you guys make, make progress and everybody comes together and...
It is our goal to do that.
There you go.
Actually, I'm not here to speak on the fire department, but I will. I'm going to give you a number of calls that the fire department has responded to since January 1st, be 55 for fire. Doesn't mean it was fire, just emergency response or whatever needs to work. 484 EMS calls. In progress, we're not making any. It's sad to say, but that's, that's the, the president mentioned about, we want to buy a ladder truck, yeah, we do, but we get to worry about keeping the doors open first. The last time, last rumor I heard, it was $25 on the checking account. You know, so I don't pay attention to that, that's not my job, my responsibility is my men and the safety. So I don't know the bank accounts, so I don't know, and I don't really want to pay attention, that might sound wrong, but that's, you know, I have a lot to worry about other than, because I know if my key opens that door every day that I go there, that's another day that we can make it. Because I don't know what we'll do if we don't have a fire department in this borough. That's all I have. I don't, I don't know if I can answer any questions. I'm sort of a taxidermist.
I talked with President Koachin a week and a half ago, and he did indicate to me that the bank account was getting pretty thin. In last week's workshop of council, we discussed whether or not we would release the funds for this quarter, and it was the opinion of council that we wanted to see a new ordinance agreed to between the two parties, and that we would be prepared to pay individual bills that the fire department was getting in danger of defaulting on. So we, we contacted, we had the chief contact the treasurer. Is that Mr. Beckler, chief?
No.
Chapman?
Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman, and expressed to him that if they had some bills that were very close to, you know, the due date, and they needed to pay them to bring them over, and that we would pay them, because we don't want to see you guys go default either. But at the same time, the paying of the bills is the only leverage that we have to try to get a new ordinance approved. If, if we don't have that, then the process could just continue on indefinitely. And so we want to provide some interim mechanism so that you don't default on your bills, and at the same time, try to keep moving ahead on, on getting an ordinance and a contract with the fire department.
So, Mr. President, I would suggest that you contact the president of that fire department and see if he can make any progress, because contacting a borough employee, I don't think is the right thing to do. I think you need to go through a chain of command. I mean, I'm not being smart about it, but, I mean, to call the guy that is working on Public Works and put him in the middle of it, yes, he is an officer, but the president will make a decision if we need to turn our bills over. He can't make that decision.
Okay.
That's all. I mean, I'm not trying to cause any waves, but...
Okay, that's the next step we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments this evening?
I just have to, Todd, I'm sorry, I should have run it. It dropped away. Sorry. I just, I'm, I'm just a little confused why the simple things that the borough is asking for, that would straighten, straighten all of this up, we can't, we can't get. I'm, I'm just really confused.
I can't recall, I think we, we, we met all of the bands except for the two voting people on board.
No, I thought there was one more.
That was the only other one.
And personally, if you or anyone up there would like to get up in the middle of the night, go to all the training we do, and put your lives on the line, you could have a seat on that board. Am I wrong for thinking that way? I got it. I went 30 years into this.
Well, this is the thing, this is the thing. We, we were elected to be physically responsible for the community.
Sure.
Okay? The community taxpayer money, the money that we give to the fire department is all of our money. So therefore, I think that we should have at least one person there to see what's going on. I mean, you, you pay taxes here, we pay taxes here, we all pay taxes here. Don't you think all the taxpayers have a right to know what's going on, what the money's being spent?
And they're more than welcome, that's a public meeting, they're more than welcome to come to that meeting.
Yes, but, but, but without a voting person on that board, okay? You guys can go into executive session, and nobody from the community and none of the council people are allowed in that meeting, and you can discuss in there what you're doing with the money, and then we still don't know, we still can't answer to the taxpayers. Now, to me personally, I, you know, whatever, you know, whatever you decide to do, I have faith in you guys, okay? But we have to answer to him and him and her and everybody else around here. Whenever, when people come up to me and say, "Well, what does the fire department do with that money if they don't have any money?", and I have to say, "I don't know, because they don't tell us."
So we held these town hall meetings in the past, and I think maybe...
So we held these town hall meetings in the past, and I think maybe we had a dozen people in each of them?
Wow.
And what has the fire department done so wrong?
Nothing, nobody's, nobody's saying that.
So we don't get no money, and we keep falling farther back on the bills, and that just takes more money out of the way.
No, we said, if anything else down here, we'll pay them.
Todd, when we, when we look at the situation we compared to the library, and we have the executive librarian sitting here now, back when the library was in financial trouble in the 90s, they complained that the borough wouldn't give them any money, and we said, "We can't just give you money, we need to be there to monitor." And we did that, and we give them money every year, and we have on their board three voting members, there are council members here, and one of them, myself, who are voting members on their board. For the most part, those three seats are passive seats. We go to the meetings, we don't actively engage in running the library by any means. It allows us to be there to see what they're doing and to make sure that the residents' money is being spent properly. And that's, that's really the whole crux of it. It's not an accusation that something is being done inappropriately, it's just our financial responsibility to the citizens to make sure we watch where the money goes and it's getting used correctly. That is really the crux of the matter. It's not accusatory or anything like that, it's just part of our responsibility to the taxpayers. And I think we're probably going to be able to get through that issue and move forward, I really do.
I hope we are, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's get mad.
Top of the...
Just one more question, your voting meeting's tomorrow night, right? When is it?
Tomorrow's meeting.
Next Tuesday?
20, third Tuesday?
Third Tuesday, okay. That was just a question.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, then Good and Welfare, Council Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish everybody that's Irish, and I guess even those that aren't Irish, because right on St. Patrick's Day, everybody's Irish, a happy and safe St. Patrick's Day, and, you know, I was going to say, spring's coming, but on some days here, even in March, it appears that spring has already arrived, but have a happy and safe month, and maybe I'll see you in a restaurant here in town or passing by, and if not, I'll see you next month, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Councilman Katina.
No comment this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Ducko, any comments? Councilman Gears?
Nothing today.
All right, with that, then, could I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.